Welcome to the council meeting of October the 15th, 2019 at 4:40 PM. One notice, council will hold a public meeting on Tuesday, October the 29th, to hear comments concerning traffic and parking amendments. We'll have a short moment of silence. Approval of the agenda?
It's moved by councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by councillor Stacey White. The council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of October 15th, 2019 as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous? Any declaration of pecuniary interest? None noted? Petitions and delegations? Welcome Melanie Doobie, Kirkland Lake Aquatic Club stingrays.
It was like kind of green, but. The request today for the Kirkland Lake Aquatic Club would be to have the permission to use, again, the sports tourists grant. I know from the last meeting that the council want to change that, but it will be in effect in January. And the Kirkland Lake Aquatic Club has two meet on the schedule of this year. The first one will be in December 6th and 7th. We expect to have at least seventeen that will come to this meet. And the club would like to be able to apply for the sports tourists grant, to be able to rent the big pool, but also the leisure pool. Because we are happy to have also this year in May, for the first time in Kirkland Lake, the Fedram Championship, in which there's going to be sixteen teams that will come in our town to participate to that meet. And we will in time apply for the community grant if it's possible and if you have more details on how it's going to work. Because the club is strong with swimmers in Kirkland Lake, but has really big costs just for the pool rental, just for our practice. It's around $36,000 a year that we have to budget. And those meet are for us a way to raise money, to help us to be able to pay those costs to the town and to the complex. Because otherwise, the cost for every swimmer would be just too big and there will be no more swim team.
Any comments or questions? Melanie, we certainly appreciate the work that you do with, your group does with the stingrays. Certainly has been a success story and we continue to support you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Is that coming back as, oh, sorry? Councillor White?
Sorry, as always, how much is left in that account?
To date, we have spent $16,784. We have commitments towards the year end of another $3,000. And we do have some outstanding applications today, obviously, with the swim passes and that.
Councillor Owen?
Well said.
With no S.
Yeah. I know, it's hard. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the sports tourism grant is still in effect till the end of December, right? And then we switch over to the community grant, which would be a maximum of $5,000 per applicant?
That's what was put into the policy proposal, if that's what council approves.
Okay, so it's, yeah, I just wanted to get that clear in my head. Thank you.
Any further comments, questions?
So I have a motion that's moved by councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by councillor Stacey White. The council approves the request for the stingrays' application to the 2019 sports tourism program.
All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you very much. We will be appreciative.
Thank you Melanie, and continued success. Steve Cox, Kirkland Lake Gold Miners. Just a reminder to those doing a delegation today or petitions, there's a ten-minute maximum.
I'm attending this afternoon's council meeting to give you an update on the progress of the Gold Miners Hockey Club. We are now one and a half months into our second season. And then following a meeting that I had on September the 25th with Wilf and Bonnie to update them, I'm here today to give council an update. From the organization's standpoint, we are moving forward and continuing to make adjustments to how we operate the club. We have a very committed volunteer and fan base. Our financial system, situation has improved as we cleared all the debt with the town and the league and other vendors last season. In saying this, we're still not where we want to be. Our ultimate goal is to not have any assistance from the town and be able to not have, not be any liability to the town or any contributions and operate solely on our own. Like I said, we're entering our first season, our second season, and our organization has been working hard through the first season to restructure. We would like council to consider waiving one final year of our room rental agreement as per past history. The hockey club has invested a lot of capital into the complex in building the new rooms, their first new room under dressing room five and four. And then since we've moved back into the Legion, the former Legion 87's room, we've made some investment in that room at all at the same time. So we feel that if you can help us with one more year, then we'd be in a position to start paying rent for the next season. We are very aware that the town has provided financial relief to the club through reduced non-prime rates for practices and assisting with playground fees. And that's very much appreciated because that all helps us operate within the town. Since we've moved this, since we've moved out of that first area, this has also allowed the complex to continue to collect rent on the first portion that we invested in. So as I mentioned, we will be prepared in budgeting to start paying rent for the 2020-21 season. And hopefully shortly after that, be able to pay things like fitness memberships and those things as well. But we are working hard to continue to improve our operations, our, how we're viewed upon in the community, and continuing to work hard to be a community, a good community partner and provide fast-paced junior hockey entertainment for Kirkland Lake and area. Thank you.
Steve, if I may comment from our discussion we had this morning, I think you kind of undersold the progress you're making. I say I think you might have undersold the progress that you're making. The fact that you've been able to pay all your bills that were previously carried over from the previous year and financially have moved forward quite nicely. I think you're, you're on track. Councillor Ivanov?
Steve, how much money do you guys pay a year to the complex right now? I know it's a large amount.
This past season, our, our revenue to the town of Kirkland Lake was $25,364.
That's for ice rental?
That's for ice rental, yeah. Yeah, because of, and arena board, arena board payment portion back to the town.
Thank you.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I'm, I definitely think that the Gold Miners add something to the town. I don't have a problem with that. I think it's exciting to have a junior A team. I don't go to the games, I think, because when I was younger, I spent too much time in the arena. And I just kind of stay away from there now. Or maybe I don't want to be asked to volunteer. But I do follow the Gold Miners. But when I sit at this table, I'm representing all the ratepayers of Kirkland Lake. And we have a lot of ratepayers. They're just hanging on, paying their taxes, their water bills, their wastewater bills. And when I, when I was president of Minor Hockey, we got the youth rate, which every youth group got. But we didn't get any subsidy. And we had to raise all our own money to keep the program going. In recent years, it seems that groups have come to council and asked for money and me giving it, and it's snowballed. So what do I do next council meeting if Minor Hockey comes and says, "We're going to fold"? We only want to pay dead ice time for all the ice time we rent. Like, as a councillor, it's difficult for me. You mentioned you want the subsidy for the dressing room rent, but we're also subsidizing all the fitness passes. I believe you're getting the youth ice rental rate, which is a subsidy because according to the rules, a team wouldn't qualify for that. So, and investing in the dressing room, I don't look at that as an investment in the, in the complex. I look at that as making the dressing room more suitable for your use. I know when I was president of Minor Hockey, we built a whole storage room. We did it with donations of labor and lumber. We didn't get a discount on the rent for doing it. When I was involved with the Midget Girls Hockey Team, we made improvements in the room that they rented, but we still paid the same rent as the room was set to be rented for. I really don't have a problem at this point of continuing with the youth ice rate and dead ice rate. But I do have a problem with rent-free. I don't think it's fair to ask ratepayers in town that are just barely hanging on to their houses and on fixed incomes to subsidize a hockey team. I realize it's a mammoth task you have because I've been involved before, not with junior A, but with Minor Hockey. But at the same time, I haven't been presented with a business plan that shows how you're going to become sustainable. And, and that's, that's, that's a problem for me. I know that's not what you wanted to hear, Steve, but I have to represent all taxpayers, not just sports fans.
Councillor Owens?
How much money, no, in your investments in the change room, like what specifically have you guys done that alters your room to the point where it adds value to these change rooms?
When the team took, when the last executive took over from the first owner, they reconstructed totally underneath all the stands between dressing rooms spot four and five and built a dressing room, equipment storage area, so forth. So it's still there. And then after a few years of operating, they decided to move back to the Legion 87's room, which was for our AAA hockey program. So that allowed, that left that other space open so it could be available for rental again. We made some improvements to the Legion 87's room. And in the event that one day we no longer exist, those improvements remain in the facility. That's, just the waiving of the rental fee or the room rental fee has gone back as far as when the Legion 87's initially made the room, way back when I was working for Parks and Recreation. So there was always, they made, and these are, these are a bunch of box stalls made of plywood. This is a nice-looking facility. We need, we need a state-of-the-art or a nice dressing room because it's one of the components that attracts hockey players to the community. And we need to attract talented hockey players who are competitive on the ice, so the fans come to the games, so the sponsors sponsor us, and so on. So as I said, that's what we're, we're looking at, one final year. Currently, our, we will be in a position to give you an audited statement. We're just working with Grant Thornton right now. It's been a few delays along the way. Because once one season ends, the next season starts. So everything kind of runs into each other, so let's, we're prepared to do that.
So if we were to extend this by another year, it's, I think it's roughly about $5,000, right? I think the number that came through the, what we got for fees? Like, do we have the money to cut, like? Because there's only a limited amount of money that's available for you, for groups throughout the municipality, and they do get... And don't get me wrong, I'm not going to side with Mr. Owen on this one. Like, I appreciate, I do go to hockey games, I am a fan. I, I enjoy doing it, so I do appreciate the value of it. But I also appreciate that there's many groups in Kirkland and there's a limited pot of money. And we did ask the taxpayers to do, to basically bend over backwards and get kicked in the butt for taxes and water this year. So we have to find, there's got to be a fine line where we can accommodate them without cutting funding for the other groups, so... Is there an alternative to, instead of a full refund, can we go part ref, or discount? Would that...
The club would be open to anything that, you know, I'm just here to present.
Yeah.
To continue with past history, if you have a counter or something.
Like, I'm open to a part refund? I just don't think that we can afford to do the full refund of, or not refund, but discount on the, on the visit, on the rental.
Do you need a commitment for the full season? Or can that be prorated by month so that when they have the community grant program, that it comes back?
We'd be open to anything that, like, we came in looking for a continuation of the waiving, which has been history. But if you're not in a position that you're able to do that, if you want to come up with a different alternative, any help to the club would be acceptable.
That's just one suggestion to go on a monthly basis. You get through to the end of the year then, and then the application comes in for the next one?
That'd be a way of doing it.
Yeah, our new program is starting in the new year, so that's where Wilf's coming from. Councillor Ivanov had a question or comment?
Yeah, I, I mean, I fully support the Kirkland Lake Gold Hockey Team. I understand that without the team there, we'd probably have $25,000 less in income in the, in the community complex and we'd have a lot more dead ice time. So I don't see any harm in, in helping Kirkland Lake Gold Hockey Team with some sort of a discount on their, on their room. I just wish you guys would come back to us and say, "Here's what we can actually afford without, you know, because I mean, we're sitting here, we don't see your financial statements." So we're, we're just sitting back.
Or you're going to see it.
Yeah, no, I understand that. So if, if there's something we can do till the end of the year and then maybe talk about this early in the new year, it would be probably to our, probably, so we'd have more.
How about this? Differ billing us for the room rental till January 1st. By then, we're midway through the season. We have a better idea of what our current year's financial situation is going to be. And then we can revisit it.
See, that sounds good to me. And I, you know, I don't see any benefit to the ratepayers by, by bankrupting a hockey team in Kirkland Lake because that's just going to be $25,000 less more on the ratepayers, you know? So I don't see the benefit to that, so...
Councillor White?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm really not, I, I'm in agreement with our interim CEO that I'm really not willing to go further than the December 31st deadline of what we have currently, because we do have new wording coming up. As far as the amount, we simply cannot do it. Doing the math, we have, before saying yes to the stingrays, we had $5,216 left in our pot. We still have two months to go. So right now, we just don't have the funds, unfortunately. It is a great program. My children adore it. And when I was in high school, I was a lot more involved. I enjoyed it a lot more back then. So it is a good program, but unfortunately, we just don't have the funds to support it past December 31st.
Councillor Owen?
Okay, when we go to our new system of grants, where does the free fitness memberships and decreased ice time rate, where, where does that get accounted for?
It's all part of what they would be putting in their application. They say that this is the amount, this is how we want to use it. Comes back to council, you're making that decision at that time.
Okay, I just want to clarify one thing that Steve said. I talked to a previous executive of the 87's and they were paying rent on the dressing room. They were paying rent when my son played on the team. So they, according to him, and he may be not 100% right, they had one free year of rent. But Steve would probably know better than me. I just wanted to clarify that they were paying rent.
Well, they did pay rent, but they did get some relief the first few years.
Yeah, I think, Steve, part of the, not the mystery, but in previous years, getting financial information out of the club was like pulling hen's teeth. And I, I'm very happy to hear that you're prepared to share the financial statements. It just gives us a little more sense of accountability and trust, I think. And we've been rebuilding on that in the past year, thanks to you and the new group. I would be prepared to support deferring till January 1st to see where you're at. That's my opinion. Councillor Perrier? Any other comments? Are we okay with that? Councillor White?
So weren't, won't deferring, charging them kind of mess up our budget? Because doesn't our budget end?
Well, defer till December 31st.
Okay.
From our perspective too, we don't want to be messing with what we're counting on and that it just gets a little bit messy.
So you basically said no to our request. So we're just asking for alternative to defer till December 31st now? That's what I'm to understand?
I think that deferring it to December 31st is one option. The second option was that you're, how many months are you in the dressing room prorated by that month?
Pardon?
Prorated by the number of months that you're in the dressing room so that that part of the money is forwarded? Those were the two options that I heard.
But are we deferring just, right now, all we're talking about is the rental of the room? The ice time stays the same, they still get that discount, right? Nothing else in the agreement changes?
That's my understanding.
So it's not a complete no to your request? It's just a partial?
A partial, okay.
It's a partial no, yeah.
Okay, partial maybe.
Partial maybe.
Councillor Owen?
I was going to say ish, but...
I know it's going to sound strange coming from me, but I think we should decide to keep their ice rate the same for the whole season because that's a, that's a big bill. To change that part of their budget in the middle of their hockey season, I don't think would be fair to the team. I don't know. I think Steve would probably agree with me.
I think Steve's request...
Well, I would think that we're going to operate our 2019, 2020 season under the same rates right through to March.
Well, except...
And then this would start in August and we open up training camp in 2020 so that we can properly budget it.
But is that in our budget? Have we budgeted for that discount? Because that's a subsidy.
I'm seeing it a different way too, Bonnie. Can you make a comment on it? I'm seeing it too differently, too.
Couple of questions. Yes, we did budget to continue with the same rates that they are accustomed to for the rest of this year, so budget purposes?
The rest of the season?
For the rest, for the rest of their season, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now, we don't budget for 2020 yet. Like, we, the town, don't budget for 2020 yet. But I would not suspect that we would make a change to an ice rate in the middle of their season. That's why we pass our ice rates, our user fees in July 1st. Yeah, and just in terms of the room rental, when I did a little bit of math, because they're residents for the whole year, if you want to look at deferring and perhaps waiving a portion, you'd be looking at about $2,700 if you wanted to waive the amount until Christmas. So if that fits into what's left in the community grants, that could be an option. And then in January, whatever the remainder was left, maybe that's when they can look to see what their finances are to see if the rest of that portion, that, that's just the amount.
That we, there we meet the budget that we've set up.
You got all that, John?
So now, instead of deferring the billing of the dress, the billing of the dressing room till December 31st, what we're going to do is waive?
Waive the 2019 portion.
The 2019 portion of it. Okay.
And we look at it in January?
January.
December, yeah.
Okay.
Councillor Ivanov?
Now that we have Bonnie at the table, what would happen if there was no KL Gold Hockey Team to the community complex and to the ice rentals? And to, just tell me, just...
Like financially, it's a big hit.
Would be a big hit, yeah. That's what I'm thinking. Didn't have my button on.
So I have a motion that's moved by councillor Stacey White, seconded by councillor Dennis Perrier. The council approves the request from, of waiving the 2019 portion of the Kirkland Lake Gold Miners dressing room fees and it be drawn from the community grants account.
And let's clarify that for Sherry as soon as we can.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much.
Continued success. Next on the agenda, Brian Coghlan, Natty Lake.
Hello. First of all, I just want to say that we're here today to talk about the formation of a recognized committee out at Natty Lake. We're not here to talk about, so very clear. Due to the zoning application, there's been a lot of interest in what's going on out of the lake. There's been analysis and what have you. So there's been various emails that have blown out. I've been involved with it, as have others. So the way it's transformed is that several people, five people, have come forward that want to participate. And I just, you know, took them at will. want to participate, and I just, you know, took them at will, and if you're wondering why I'm the person that's doing it, is, it's usually because nobody else will take the initiative, or there's no official organization. So what we want to do is have an official lake association that can communicate with the planning department and American Council. And what this will do is facilitate any important decisions that you have to make moving forward with Nettie Lake, because there have been, you know, some problems that have developed. So right now, myself and Ray Kenny here, have started the formation of a group, we've had the cooperation of Cesare Ferraro here, Susan Hahn was not here, and Sarah Loretto, and she is here, okay. So, right now, we are the group that will be setting up the meeting, communicating with all of the people out there, and we plan to do that with a mail-out. And so we will be using the town's information to identify all of the residents out there, because right now, there's new ones, there's existing ones, but we want to make sure that every single person is contacted in order to have a public meeting and form this group properly, so it, it, it has status with the town, so it will be the official group, you know. And from this group, based on, you know, what has been documented as overdevelopment of the lake, and I'm, and I'm not here to debate that point either, but that's, that's been stated many times, there's a lot of feeling out there that there is overdevelopment, and, and a lot of people would like to see that addressed, including myself and, and the people on the committee, you know. So, you know, once we have the meeting, there will be an official election of the representatives, and then we will move forward, you know, from there. And essentially, it will be a, a lake association to provide you with, with information. And, that's about it, you know? We're not here to debate or whatever, we're just here to let you know what we're doing, and, and we would like your cooperation, and any input you may have. Ray, do you want to say anything?
Yes, the reason I took an interest in this is that, is that based on the information that came out from Blue Heron and from the M and R surveys, and, yeah, I'd be good, have Yeah, the reason I took an interest in this is that there have been three surveys that have been done on the lake, nineteen seventy-eight, nineteen ninety-nine, and two thousand and sixteen, and what they're showing is that there's a steady deterioration in the quality of lake, the lake water quality, and that's a concern. And what we're seeing in that, in the large part of the lake, when you go down twenty meters into the lake, halfway down, there's substantially lower oxygen levels, and so over time, that, the oxygen deficiency has been growing, so it's getting closer to the surface, and, and eventually, that's gonna have a, a significant impact on the residents, the cottage owners around the lake, and I just want to make sure that people understand what the issues are out there, because I'm an environmental troubleshooter, and I have a cottage on the lake, and I didn't realize what the condition was until I actually saw the data, and I did my own survey on the lake, and it shows that, that there are some pretty serious problems out there, and I just don't want it to get to the point where in three or four, five years, people are saying, why didn't we do something? How come people weren't aware of it? And, and the reason I'm really doing this is for the, the generations are coming up, for the children and the grandchildren, and the future users of the, of the lake. So if we don't do anything, I'm just concerned that, that the water quality is gonna get so bad, it's gonna have a pretty serious effect overall.
Okay. The other, the other thing I might add is, is that, in all of this, you know, there's been correspondence to me and probably to you guys with the zoning app, from people that have been there a long time, including me, I've been there almost forty years, and, you know, one of the things that, you know, I have observed, and the same as these other people that have written me, is, is the amount of loons that aren't there anymore, there's some, but not as many. The megansers have been nested there for, I don't know, ten years, maybe longer. Megansers are fish ducks, they feed on fish, fish are reliant on oxygen, so what Ray is indicating here is kind of like the canary in the coal mine, you gotta start paying attention, okay? Because the water quality is not as good as it what it used to be, and, and the feeling on the lake is that we want to protect that, okay? We want to preserve that. So where we're coming from in all of this is based on a lot of biological information that has got to be looked at, you know, so the whole scope of what we're doing is not just water, although the water is the trigger, but it's based on the biological, you know, the fish, the waterfowl, and everything that goes with it. And development is the biggest thing that is impacting this, along with boat traffic and everything else, okay, and trailers and, you know. So what is needed is regulation, because right now, we do not have that. Only regulation you have out there is zoning, that's it. So we are going to be coming to you with information that is going to be given to you from the people out at Nettie Lake to know what's going on, okay? And that's what we want to do. So, if you have any other questions or whatever, just let them fly, you know, that's why we're here.
Counselor Ivanov?
I think we've been waiting for that, Brian and Ray, come back to this council, tell us what you want, and if you have consensus out at the, the lake, I think we would support that, so, thank you.
I, I do like the idea, Brian and Ray, it's a cons- a consensus of, of all the different groups out there, because there is a split in, in some areas, no question, that's...
Yeah, I'd like to comment on that, the approach that I would like to see taken, and this is gonna be up to the people at the meeting.
Yep.
But you have role numbers for, for pieces of property, and, and those are the ones that you're going to base your, your membership on, whoever owns the property, the ratepayers, okay? And, and the structure, in my view, should be one vote per parcel, you know, that's the way it should work, that's fair, that's equitable. Whoever the taxpayers are should have their say, and that should be based on role numbers. That's my view.
Sounds fair. Counselor Rowan?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm glad to see you're forming a, a formal association. I know I have a cottage on Sessakinnika, and we have a formal association out there. One of the things that we get out of that association is that they do water testing, and it's sent away, I, I don't know whether it's Ottawa or, anyways, it's sent away, and it's kept track of, and they measure the clarity of the water and a few other things, and it certainly would go a long way to preserving the lake. I just wanted to caution that anybody that is out there that is a ratepayer will still be able to approach council as an individual ratepayer or the planning department. I'm, I'm just throwing that out, because...
That's your rate.
Yeah, yeah, no, I ju- no, I just wanted to put that out.
Yep.
But I think having a formal association takes a lot of the guesswork out for us as counselors, because as I said in the telephone conversation with you, I take very little face value, so if you came here and said you talked to twenty-five property owners, I'd be sitting here going, did he really do it? Right? Sorry, that's just my nature, so I'm glad to see what you're doing.
Any further comments or questions?
Okay, that's fine, we, we just let you know what we're doing, and we will be back with as much information as we can as soon as we interact together, okay?
Thanks, sir Ray, and thanks, Brian. Acceptance of minutes and recommendations?
It's moved by Counselor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perier. The council accepts the minutes of the following meetings. The Kirkland Lake Public Library Board held June twentieth, twenty nineteen. The meeting to open tenders for the supply, delivery, and stockpile of winter sand held October first, twenty nineteen. The regular meeting of council held October first, twenty nineteen. The meetings of council with Strategy Corps held October third and fourth, twenty nineteen, and the meeting to open quotations for Pest Control Services held October eighth, twenty nineteen.
All in favor? Reports of municipal officers and communications, C A O?
A while ago, we had discussed the, I think it was during the budget process, the concept of the municipal accommodation tax. Back in twenty seventeen, the provincial government changed the rules and regulations and allowed single and lower-tier municipalities the authority to levy a transient accommodations tax, also known as a hotel tax. The rules are fairly easy to understand, you can levy whatever amount you want, most people are levying at four percent. You, the revenue that is collected, fifty percent goes towards a recognized tourism promoter, fifty percent stays with the municipality. If that tourism promoter, or, I'm trying to find the right terminology right now, is a group in your community, well then, obviously, you can direct the money towards that. It's being implemented widely across the province, there are always concerns, I tried to summarize some of those on, in the report. Generally, accommodation providers do have to bear costs to adjust their systems and practices, for which they are not compensated, and there will be extra processing costs, even just figuring out the paperwork. The tax makes local accommodation providers appear less competitive than those in neighboring communities. Larter Lake, for example, doesn't have it, Ango, Timiscan Shores doesn't have it. Yes, that's true, there's also the concept, as was reported in the Bay today, the concept of charging people more money and thinking that those marketing dollars will influence them to come here and spend more money, is off. Those are the things that I think we would need to address, and I think the proper format for that is in a public meeting and in a meeting with the accommodation providers. I think we do need to bring that information back to council, and the council adjusts its directions accordingly. I think that we can do this probably in October, November, I'm hopeful, and that we can bring something back to council in time for the twenty twenty budget. If I'm too ambitious on that, I think that we can at least clear off the paperwork and the decision-making process to have it introduced afterwards. And, sorry, one of the things that I did want to say, in cons- in relationship to the concern with the accommodation providers, I think that, I, I would recommend to council that you do take some steps that do address some of the concerns that the accommodation providers have long held in Kirkland Lake. For example, we do have a very good business coming to town every winter with the snowmobilers. They par- they come here, they park here, and then they take the sleds further north. The problem is, we don't have a secure lockup area. That has been a problem repeatedly. We tried to make some spaces, like behind Market Street and Heritage North and that, it's not really sufficient, it, it, it's a, it's a holdback for the accommodation providers, something like that would benefit the community as a whole, better signage, and reallocating spaces, say parking spaces, for motorcycles, to capture some of the motorcycle traffic that comes through. Wouldn't help necessarily the accommodation providers as much as the restaurant owners and that, but still, it's something that, it's an investment into the community that benefits the tourism industry that's supporting the tax. So I just wanted to point some of those out.
Wolf, just to clarify, we would also look at having a committee of the whole meeting to invite the public and hotel owners to present any concerns or discussion?
That would be a council's direction, we could also hold just an open meeting at Heritage North, as we have done with other tourism initiatives and economic development initiatives, collect the feedback, bring that back to council too, and council then could attend as they wish, or, either way, it doesn't necessarily have to be a formal meeting right here.
Any further comments, questions, Counselor Rowan?
I just think that's, this would be a great way to alleviate our problem we had tonight, trying to accommodate all these groups that need the money, that want our support, and we just simply don't have the money to do it, and it's not impacting our local residents, it's getting money from the people that come here temporarily, but that we can get money off of them and to help our local groups, I think this is a great, great way to alleviate the problem.
Totally agree. So that's, this, sorry, Counselor Adams?
Yep, since the request is to consult the public and write a report, certainly all in favor of that, and when we get the input back and what's all happening, then we make a decision from there, so certainly in favor of looking into.
Counselor White?
Of course, I'm all for investigating this, and I do believe that we should, as Wolf suggested, invite for public feedback as well as the accommodation providers. One point to note is, three out of the four of our known hospitality providers are chain stores, so in the bigger centers, they already have this type of I T in place, so I look forward to seeing what the public has to say.
Thank you. Counselor Ivanov?
Yeah, I, I, I hear Wolf's comments about Timiscan Shores not having accommodation tax, but I know that rooms in Kirkland Lake were renting at a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty bucks, when Lister was renting at a hundred and eighty bucks, and now that Kirkland Lake Gold has prospered and mining has become quite an influence in our community, rooms here have increased by the fifty or sixty dollars that they were short before. I think those providers will take into account that four percent, if they're not competitive, they'll do some adjustment on room rates. I don't think that's gonna be an issue in Kirkland Lake, to be honest with you, I think that collecting that money and using that money for nonprofit organizations and to help the levy, I think is a, is a positive thing.
Thank you. Counselor Rowan?
Yeah, initially, I was not in favor of this, because I remember many weekends on the road with my kids when we didn't have a lot of money, and adding to that cost would, would, would have hurt, but when I saw how many communities have jumped on board with this, I think it's a great idea, as well, I would have a clear conscience giving that money away, because it's not gonna impact on the fixed-income people in town that are struggling to keep their houses and keep their food and keep their lights on, so I think it's a great idea. And public input, yeah, this is somewhat of a major change, it's something brand-new that we've never seen before, so I'm definitely in favor of public input.
I, I think most people were where this was coming up, and it's a sign of the times, there's the odd person that might think it's a tax grab, but in all honesty, if anything, it's going to help us control our tax, tax levy more so than we've had in the past, or we would be dishing out more money upon these requests that we are receiving, so this certainly, I think, would help the tourism aspect of it, and I don't think it's going to hurt the hotels at all. So, go ahead.
I have a motion that's moved by Counselor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perier. The council directs the acting chief administrative officer to hold consultations with the public and accommodation providers to introduce a municipal accommodation tax, and that a summary of consultation, along with proposal for the structure and overall implementation, be brought back for council's consideration.
All in favor?
Hi, I'm just here to give a, an update on the emergency management. Part of the yearly compliance is the whole tabletop exercise, so we held our tabletop exercise last... So we held our tabletop exercise last week, October the ninth. The scenario was a train derailment at Swastika for Dennis. It involved a, a heart attack, train derailment, diesel leak and a fire. But there was about fifteen people present, including our mayor, some town workers, OPP, ambulance and the OMR. And everything went quite well. Lorenzo and I have some things to follow up on, but all in all, it went well.
Question, Rob?
Sure.
I believe Stacy is the backup for the mayor. I'd like her to attend some of these sessions because it's well worthwhile. And there's a lot of detail, but you get a clear understanding of what the expectations of, expectations of what our roles are. So it's well worth attending. You'll find it very interesting. So if we would add that, Rob, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, no problem.
Any comments, questions? It was a great session, Rob, well prepared, I must say.
Thank you.
Joanne?
First one on my list is a request from the council from Blue Mountains. The integrity commissioners, each municipality now has to have one, but there are no real rules as to what happens with the integrity commissioners, with the requests that go into them, the investigations that they have. So the council of Blue Mountains is petitioning the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing to please have a searchable database set up so that all of these investigations do go into one place and, and they will be available to people to see what the, what the, the outcome of it is and what the decision that was made. So I do have a res-
If I may comment, Joanne? I think this is really important. We've seen, I won't name the community, but where there was an investigation on council and there was a lot of irregularities, to put it mildly. And the integrity commissioner, commissioner came back with a lot of recommendations. It sort of like was council, the fox in the, in the hen house because they were going to have to discipline themselves and tried to weasel their way out of it. So I think getting a clear understanding of what has happened in some communities, just, it's a good eye-opener. And it also, I, I think it stresses the importance of council acting in a transparent and professional manner. So having that available will certainly guide us along the way if we ever need it.
The resolution is moved by councillor Stacey White, seconded by councillor Dennis Perrier. The council of the town of Kirkland Lake supports the council of the town of Blue Mountains in its petition to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing that a searchable database be created and made available of all matters placed before all integrity commissioners within the province and the resolution of such matters.
All in favor?
Okay, the next two items come from two different clubs. CJKL Spooktacular is somebody who the town has worked with before. And this is, is for Halloween. So CJKL Spooktacular is asking or requesting from council two hundred swim passes to put in their Halloween bags. And that goes along with the next item, which is from the early years Ontario, which is Neofax. And they're asking for sixty swim passes to put in their Halloween bags.
Councillor White?
Is this coming from the community grants money?
Yeah, those were the ones that I said are pending, I recall.
Okay, so-
It's four dollars and forty cents a student for-
Yes, yes. So I don't even know if we have enough because I don't know how much it costs for the, and this is the problem, because we're getting down to it, that with the community grants program for next year, I believe we're gonna have to maybe increase the amount allotted. Because if we're putting all the waived fees, all the, the actual cash, everything coming out of that amount, it's, it's not enough. And we're clearly seeing that. We still have two months to go to the end of the year. Like, we just, twenty-five thousand is just not enough.
I, I think the other thing, Stacy, it, it's hard to track whether they're being used, first of all. And in my view, giving these out, it is a form of marketing because hopefully those parents will bring those, their kids back. I know my grandchildren, that's exactly what happened. Well, they didn't get free passes, but, but once you, you've gone there once or twice because it's such a great facility, that'll bring them back and they may pay an annual membership.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not disagreeing in any way, shape or form. I'm just pointing out that we may have underappreciated how much money we actually give. Not only that, I believe when we gave the passes to Northern College, Bonnie stated that she would track it. So perhaps for these two as well, if we could use like different colors or, or some notation of what initiative it came from, then we'd have better ideas for following yours.
Yes, we, we can do that as well. The passes that went to the college, I had said that there was roughly three thousand dollars out there that, towards the end of the year. I don't think that very many of them have been taken in, taken up on. I think that for the complex, it was roughly seven hundred and eighty, eighty, sorry, say eight hundred dollars. And for the museum, seven hundred dollars. So depending on what happens with those passes too.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I don't want anybody to have a heart attack, but I kind of support this. And I'll tell you why. I look at it the same way as the, a lost leader in business. Where a merchant sells something for less than it's worth, but he gets you in the store so he can sell you ten other things that he's overpriced. Now, I'm not saying that we've overpriced the pool. But what I am saying is, the pool is there, we have to maximize its use. And you know what? If a little kid goes there, depending on the size, then they're probably accompanied by an adult that's going to be paying. If a little kid goes there when they're four or five years old and they really enjoy it, the pool probably has a customer for life. And so I just look at this as a lost leader. I know I'm breaking with my normal Scottish self, but I, I would support it as long as we have the money to do it.
Councillor Adams?
So for that, those passes we gave away for the college, for the museum and complex, so how much have those come back? When are we going to find out? Because that came from that number, but if they weren't all used, then that number bigger.
That's right. And we have until December thirty-first as to when those would expire. Will somebody put a rush on them and start using them in December? That's possible. I don't think you're going to see the full amount, but for our purposes, we have to account for it that way.
So even for these two hundred passes, that's going to come off the total, but we're not even sure how many are going to be used?
That's right. I, I think that you may see a higher level of use simply because it is a target group that, you know, has more inclined to go, but we don't know.
Councillor Ivanov?
Yeah, no, I think it's great marketing. I think that if we can get people in that, we should be marketing the crap out of that pool because it's a beautiful facility. And I think that if we can get people from Kirkland Lake to go and then bring people from out of town to go, and we could, you know, I mean, it's the nicest pool probably north of Barry, so let's market the crap out of it and get people from whatever, North Bay, probably not, but maybe Timmins or Cochrane and some of those people in to use that pool. I think it would be a, a great idea to try and get the marketing done in that pool. And I'm not sure how else we could do it, through Facebook or some other way of marketing, but it should be a facility that Kirkland Lake is proud of and that we should let people know we are proud of it.
Thank you.
First resolution is moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Dennis Perrier. The council approves the request for two hundred swim passes to the CJKL Spooktacular and that staff track the use of the passes and that it be drawn from the community grants fund.
All in favor? Unanimous?
And the second one is moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Dennis Perrier. The council approves the request for sixty swim passes to the early years Halloween event and that staff track the use of the passes and that it be drawn from the community grants fund.
All in favor? Whoops, sorry, councillor Owen?
On the early years one, like if they're, if they're giving them out, like they're having a drop-in thing, if they have some left over, could they return it to us? And then we know for sure they're not coming in? Like the CJKL ones go in a package and they go out, right? But from what I read of the early years one, it's, the people are coming in, into there. So it would give us a bit better indication? Like, is that possible to ask them to do that? You know, maybe they're putting them in a package too, and maybe it's, it's not convenient. But if it is, it's just better tracking.
Sure, it's worth trying. I agree.
Okay, and the last item for me has to do with Remembrance Week. And the Royal Canadian Legion has sent their, their annual request. So I do have a motion that is moved by councillor Stacey White, seconded by councillor Dennis Perrier. The council approves the following requests from the Royal Canadian Legion Branch Eighty-Seven regarding Remembrance Week campaign activities. The coffee tag days be held Friday, October twenty-fifth and Saturday, October twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen. That Remembrance Week be proclaimed from November fourth to eleventh, twenty nineteen and in for the town of Kirkland Lake. The Remembrance Day flag be flown at Town Hall during Remembrance Week. A permit be issued for a parade on Friday, November eleventh, beginning at ten thirty AM. And that the town of Kirkland Lake purchase a wreath to be laid at the Senate Tap during Remembrance Day ceremonies on November eleventh.
All in favor? Unanimous? Whoop, question, sorry?
The day's wrong on here, does that have an impact on, like, that's not a Sunday, it's a Monday.
What day is that, sorry?
Sunday, November eleven, two thousand eighteen, that's Monday, November eleven, two thousand nineteen. For the, when they're gonna close up the parade, for the parade.
For, okay, I've got Friday and it should be Sunday.
It should be Monday.
Should be Monday, okay.
Yeah.
Monday, sorry?
I think she might have sent you the wrong letter. It's a Monday.
Okay.
Councillor White?
And just another quick question, which budget does the wreath come out of? Just out of curiosity.
Wreath, we should bring it out of the administration budget.
All in favor? Director of Tech Pioneer Residence? Nancy Folger?
Okay, I'm here tonight to talk to you about an application to build new beds for Tech Pioneer Residence. So we'll jump to the background first. So the Assistant Deputy Minister, Brian Pollard, announced about a week and a half ago that they, they have, effective immediately, they're accepting applications for new beds in long-term care or redeveloping. So what we'd be looking at is actually adding in addition on to Tech Pioneer to increase our bed number. As I'm sure everyone's aware in the news, hallway health has been a critical issue. This is part of their proposal to alleviate that. Our hospitals have a lot of ALC patients, that's alternate level of care. They're waiting to get into long-term care homes. So adding new beds across the sector will help alleviate that. Our current building, which was constructed in two thousand three, four, it has three resident home areas. The secure unit, which is Tobern, it, it is just itself, there's, there's nothing above it. So our proposal is to add an additional seventeen beds up there. And we would confirm prior to an application, if that's what you tell us to do, that that is possible. The waitlist, our waitlist currently is stable between thirty-nine and forty-two for the past year. So that does indicate a pressing need for more long-term care beds. Timiscan Lodge in Halebury is building a new home. They've added forty-six new beds, so their new home is going to be a hundred and twenty-eight beds. They're hoping to be in the ground by spring. However, their waitlist is seventy, so that still leaves a gap. And then the future is uncertain for Northview in Engleheart. Their current owner is not rebuilding, therefore their license has not been renewed. So the lack of beds in Timiscan area demonstrates a critical need for redevelopment. And just for your information, our current waitlist is thirty-nine and twenty-eight of those people live in Kirkland Lake. So our applications will be evaluated based on their alignment with program objectives, policies, project readiness, financial viability, which is going to be the big one. The hospital is our biggest partner. We're physically connected, as you are well aware. And they are completely on board with this proposal. So we'll go back to the budget. So the ministry does provide construction funding subsidy. It's on a per-bed basis, so a per diem, and it's based over a twenty-five-year period. Previously used to be able to get a lump sum, that is no longer available. So the funding would be paid on, paid by the Ministry of Health to an operator on a monthly basis for twenty-five years, provided that the operator meets the requirements and conditions set out in the policy and in the development, development agreement, which we would have to have in order to get the funding. Therefore, expenses would need to be up fronted by the corporation in a way of a loan or debenture. The base subsidy is eighteen dollars and three cents. We are, we would be a medium-sized home, so we'd have an additional seventy-five cents. And then there's a potential of having three dollars and fifty cents per diem if we make this new unit sixty percent basic accommodation. So the most we could get would be eighteen, sorry. With that, if we choose to not go with the sixty percent basic, it would be eighteen dollars and seventy-eight cents per diem, which over a twenty-five-year period would be two-point-nine million. If we went with sixty percent basic, then we would be up to three-point-five, uh, three-point-four million. We also are eligible for a one-time grant if we have a development agreement with the ministry of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, which is used to provide assistance in planning and organizing. In that, I did look that up in the act, and municipal homes are eligible for that. I have done, run some numbers on whether or not it would be more profitable for us to do sixty percent preferred, which is what we currently are in our existing beds. The only problem that I can see is you never know what your waitlist is going to be like. Currently, it's very heavily sided with basic, there's not that much preferred. So you could, if we do the three, three-fifty per bed, per year, over twenty-five years, each year it gives us roughly twenty-one thousand. If we could maintain a sixty percent preferred rate, it gives you about an extra twenty-four thousand, but that is a variable. So that is something to think about. Wolf, did you want to speak on any?
Not really much to add to it, except that we're obligated to bring opportunities- we're obligated to bring opportunities like this forward for your consideration. It is important to note that it's not something that is done overnight. It will be a number of years. And that you have the facilities in place to service the increased number of beds. Perhaps you're in a better position than most other homes that will be applying. In terms of, you know, partnerships and that, the reality is, and we took this from one of the fellows in the field that has studied this, uh, this, this part of the issue a lot, the smaller the home, doesn't help if it's tightly run. You're just not making enough on those beds to provide the level of quality and service that you feel the community deserves. So looking at going up with the numbers, it's probably really worth it. But like Nancy says, it's borrowed money somewhere down the line. And we have to watch what our borrowing limit is. But again, we have to bring it forward to, to you for your consideration.
I, I think it's important to note, Nancy, these numbers are premature at best, their estimates. That being the case, if you do look at the fact that it would increase the income substantially, hopefully to a break-even point, if there was a merger with the hospital, it certainly, in our present state, is not attractive for them, we understand that. This would make us, make it more attractive down the road. And I think the other thing is that I would caution council to not to turn this down, go through the application process. We, we, we have the opportunity of backing out any time down the road. There'll be other communities in the lineup waiting to, to take our place if we did. But if we, if we say no now, we're out. And there's no chance of getting it, so that concerns me a bit. I think we should at least make the application. The decision, as Wolf says, really, we're a few years down the road. This is not gonna hap, may not even happen in our term. But I would hate to handcuff the next council not to be able to do this and wish they, we had that availability. Just my opinion. Councillor Owens?
How far down the road before it starts costing us money, this application process?
I think that the vetting on the application process will be fairly, probably a year, year and a half. And that's not really spending too much money on it, because you're just putting the application in. Where our cost will be is dealing with the architects and whatever to see exactly what is feasible to do. And honestly, if that comes back and they say, well, no changes in legislation, changes in regulations, you can't put that floor up, we're gonna come back to council and tell you. Because then it's not really worth pursuing. We can't think that there's anywhere else to, uh, build additional rooms on the TPR, except to go up.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, um, there's certainly a need. I am very concerned about the debt load. I'm glad that your worship pointed out that we, even if we were approved, we could still turn it down, because that was one of my concerns. I, um, and we don't know what our finances are gonna be in a few years. They may be better, they may be worse. And Nancy, what's the difference between preferred and basic?
So, basic rates are for residents that live in basic accommodation, which is a two-bedroom.
Okay.
Some residents are eligible for rate reduction when they're in a basic room, so it's, it's determined on their notice of assessment. And we have an online portal that we just plug the numbers in, and it says whether they're eligible for a rate reduction, and then the ministry picks up that subsidy. Then you have preferred accommodation, so that's your semi-private and private rooms. So the difference between the basic and the preferred rate, we get to keep. We keep a hundred percent of that difference. So having sixty percent preferred right now, which we've maintained whilst for, as long as I've been there, gives us some pretty good revenue.
Thank you.
Councillor Ivanov?
Yeah, you mentioned two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, it was, uh, that you could potentially apply for. That money provide, if we got the grant and we couldn't go ahead, is that a repayable amount that we have to give back to them? Or is that something that they'll let us have for doing the, whatever the, having the engineers look at it, looking at an architect, whatever?
My understanding is we would have to have a development agreement in place before we would be eligible for that funding. So, yes, if we actually draw, uh, stop the process after that, then we would have to repay it. But I don't think we would do that. We would have committed at that point that we were gonna follow through.
Councillor Owens?
Is extended care, uh, can extended care apply for this funding grant as well?
Uh, the application is open to all eligible long-term care homes.
So we can be in competition against them to?
We potentially could be, yes.
Any further comments? Councillor White?
So what would, um, how would this affect staffing, adding seventeen more beds?
It's a good question. As everyone's aware, the entire province is, is suffering from a shortage of personal support workers. I mean, obviously, the full-time jobs that be created are not an issue, because people want full-time work. So it would be recruiting part-time. I mean, it goes, right now, we're in a, you know, a terrible state for shortage, but, you know, a year ago, it wasn't that bad. So I, I can't really say what, what, what the problem will be then. Hopefully by then, the ministry will have, um, come up with some suggestions to alleviate the shortage. I know they do have a PSW task force formed now, but that, that is a potential problem.
So, Wolf, at this point, are we looking for consensus to at least file the application?
Yes, we are.
We have a dr-
I have a resolution that's moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Dennis Perrier. The council directs the acting chief administrative officer to proceed with submitting an application to the Ministry of Long-Term Care for the Build or Redevelop Existing Long-Term Care Beds Fund.
Any further comments? All in favor? Unanimous? Thanks, Nancy. Ashley Billado?
Okay, sorry. My first report that I have presented to council tonight is a request to sign a lease agreement or negotiate a lease agreement with the Rotary Club for Rotary Park. Originally, this was established in two thousand and four, it was an agreement that we had with them. Not necessarily anything in writing, but we, we, they had twenty-five thousand dollars to spend in honor of their centennial year. We had decided, from a municipal standpoint, to put that money at Two Government Road East, develop the park cut that's there now. At this point, we, they're pretty much responsible for the park. We do the, the grass cutting at this point. So the, we sort of just wanted to formalize this agreement so it gives them a little bit more of an ability to handle what goes on in the park. There is the intent of moving the trust of murals, murals from Four Government over to Two Government. So instead of having all of this back and forth with us, it, it just makes it a little bit easier for them. And then it also reduces our risk and liability associated with the park, because we have an, an agreement on file. So it's a pretty basic request, but we did wanna bring it to council for consideration.
So Ashley, how long of a term are you looking for on this lease?
It would probably be standard with our other lease agreements, so it's ongoing. It could, it could be canceled at any point, with sixty days' notice.
As we are aware, hopefully, the Park Lane Hotel is going ahead with their expansion. And there's a need for parking. Have they approached us?
Um, I can't, uh, they, they've approached us to look for parking, yes.
But it, it's an option as well.
Yeah.
I'm concerned of tying up the property too long. I understand Rotary's concern as well. But it could be relocated.
Yeah.
At our expense, I would take it.
Yeah, certainly.
Not that I wanna see it relocated, but I, I, I don't, I'd like to see if we don't close in all our options, I guess.
Councillor White?
So usually with, when we enter into lease agreements, there's like that dollar amount, literally that one dollar. Is that going to be standard with this as well?
The standard leases that we have established with residents, a hundred and thirty-eight dollars for a base minimum, and then we have a square footage associated with it above and beyond that. I'm not sure that was our intent with this one, it was a standard dollar amount, just because they're maintaining public land.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. And to, so, uh, once this lease agreement is put in place, will they be taking over the grass cutting?
So we wanna sit down and negotiate those, yeah, all of the details of the agreement. This is just to essentially ask council whether we're okay with negotiating with them to come up with some, some agreements, on who's gonna do what and what the responsibilities are.
Councillor Ivanov?
Yeah, no, I think, uh, I, I support that, that we have a lease with Rotary Park. I can understand their concern, and I know it's cancelable after sixty days, whatever. I, I think it's a beautiful part of our community, they've done a great job. When they built it, they spent a lot of money. They did maintain it, I think, for a couple of years after they actually built it, cutting the grass and, and putting the flowers in, which they do every year. I know Patty Gannon does a lot of the work on behalf of Rotary Club, and they pay for that, I believe. They pay for all the flowers that go in there, so I, you know what, I think it's, uh, it's, it's gorgeous. And if you look across the street, Kitty Corner or, and Kitty Corner to it, those places are kinda run down. And it would, you know, it's nice that they have that, and I think it makes your downtown look a lot nicer. Thank you.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, one thing Kirkland Lake's always been good at is forming partnerships with groups outside, which has reduced our operating costs and benefited the entire community. And I'm glad to see that this agreement will be formalized and everybody will understand what their obligations are. I think it's important to keep that, that park as a park. I, it, it hasn't been used as much for formal events as it was in the past since, since Kinross Pond came online. But it's still a great downtown place for small gatherings. And I think it'd be great if the Rotary Club entered into an agreement with the town that lowers our overhead and, and they have some security in terms of the money they've invested to make the community better.
It certainly looks a lot better than a parking lot, I must agree. That'll come back as a bylaw? Continue, Ashley?
Yeah, so my second report has to do with a request to locate a mobile refreshment vehicle on municipal land. So the reason you're seeing this is in our bylaw, fifteen zero four five, we have a bylaw that licenses, licenses, governs and regulates mobile food outlets. And within that bylaw, we have a section that pertains to locating on municipal land. And in order to do so, they need a council resolution to approve that location. So when we did do public feedback and, and went through the whole, I guess, putting fifteen zero four five into effect, there was, staff did recommend that we try to steer away from having mobile refreshment vehicles on public land due to risk liability associated with it. There's plenty of private lands available, let's try to make those accessible first. Regardless, we still have the ability to come to council and ask permission to locate on town property. So this request is actually for one piece of property, but they gave us three options to consider. Typically, what happens, or what's happened in the past, is they come with one, and then council will say no, and then they'll come with another one, and council says no. So we told them to pick his top three. And so the three that are suggested here, or where he suggested going, was twenty-two, twenty-four Government Road West, which is the old Woolworths Building, that has recently been converted to a parking lot. Vacant town owned land right adjacent to Canadian Tire, which is currently being used by Canadian Tire, and then the Miners Memorial. So I did, in the report, outline kind of my two cents on each of the locations. The only one that seems feasible from a staff perspective would be twenty-two, twenty-four Government Road West. But being at the site, you can recognize that there's a unopened chip stand right across the street, so whether or not we actually want to proceed with putting another right there. Other rules that you probably need to be aware of in terms of the bylaw is that you can't be within thirty meters of a existing grocery store or food establishment. So Viennas and all that, they, they're forty-five meters away, so it's okay. And the property has to be zoned appropriately.
Councillor Ivanov?
Ashley, at one time, we used to have chip stands sitting on the street. I don't know, is that, does that not happen anymore? Is it, have we stopped doing it?
Uh, you could, if there was one here, right? Wasn't there one right here before?
Yeah, there was one here, but I mean, now there's restaurants there, so I understand why you wouldn't wanna be there. But you used to have one on Wood Street, which is, there is no restaurants there.
Yeah.
Well, there's the White Eagle, we got a small thing, but that's, aside from that, isn't there other? Can you still go on the street with a chip stand?
He's gotta get the thousand-dollar license application, and he's gotta get approval from council, because it's still pub, public land.
Yeah.
Um, but it would only hold up one parking space, I think that's the rule in the bylaw.
Yeah.
So it's possible.
Okay.
Yeah.
That makes more sense to me than giving a guy a piece of property, anyway.
Yes, uh, we went through the expense of setting up this parking lot. And it is to cover the overflow on Government Road when there's parking on one side during the winter months. I'd hate to give that up. I think it kinda defeats the purpose of why we did it at the time. So I'm not too thrilled about that location.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I really don't think any of the three locations are very appropriate. For one, a food stand and parking lot, you got traffic. It's not the safest thing to do, and we wanna maximize that parking lot. And I think people are using it more and more as they realize it is a parking lot. The vacant land beside Canadian Tire, well, Canadian Tire has an agreement to use that land. I don't wanna do anything to impede their business. And, you know, depending what this food truck looks like, but quite frankly, I don't think the Miners Memorial is an appropriate place for a food truck. It's a place of reverence, it's, uh, it's the place where I see the most tourists stop. And, and I think, you know, in, in honor of the, the people that are on that plaque, I think we would want to keep it sort of as a semi-spiritual, or whatever you wanna call its site. And so I don't think any of these three sites would, would be appropriate.
Councillor Owens?
Just to echo what councillor Owen is saying, having our family members, who his name is on that memorial, I don't think that one is the right spot at all for this venue. But taking it from another perspective, where I do teach hospitality and tourism and the concept, or the idea of having a food truck, an actual food truck in Kirkland Lake, kind of excites me. Teacher thing. I've taught this concept in my class for many years. We've had challenges in front of the school where my students have developed concepts for, for food trucks. There is potential out there for great food served out of a food truck, so I would hate to totally dismiss this, this request out of just, well, because there's no proper space, or I think we, if the proponent, or the gentleman asking for this would come up with a different concept or a concept on wheels, I think that'd be more something that I personally be in favor or, favor of instead of a permanent location given to him.
Ashley, could you clarify, there was a, uh, a trailer, I believe, on the corner of Station Road and Government Road. That property, the owner is deceased, I think it's in the estate of the family. That zoning, uh, did it qualify for that type of commercial?
That was in two thousand and fifteen, and we had to actually temporarily amend the zoning bylaw in order to let it proceed to operate. And then after the two years, we had to get the chip- Um, and then after the two years, we had to get the chip stand to move, because it wasn't in compliance with zoning. So that was one of those examples where it didn't meet the zoning by law, and the neighbors were concerned about it.
Okay. Any other comments? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I know, uh, Casners had one on the corner of Main and Government Road, and they did really well with it there, and I'm not sure if he can make a deal with Casners, but that might be, it's, it's commercial property anyway, uh, that would be a great place for him maybe to think about setting up. Um, if that's, if he's looking for some private property, that might be, uh, an option. Uh, aside from that, uh, the thing on the street, if he could find the proper location might work. Uh, I don't, uh, can't think of one offhand, but there might be, like I said, Wood Street might be a place for him to go if, uh, that was suitable. I'm just not sure what else. They've got that little place where the Red Caboose is kind of at the end of Main, where that would, he would be impacted. They haven't been open for a couple of years now, but that's the only other place I could think of. But there are some places that are already built, I mean, sitting there waiting to be taken over. Um, the one across from the TD Bank is an ideal location.
Yeah, I believe the one, uh, the end of Main Street across Government Road is, uh, being renovated as we speak.
Well, there you go. Well, but there is that commercial property that Casners own that might be suitable for him.
Yeah, Casners property, that would be excellent. So I'm not in favor of any of the locations, honestly.
I have a motion that's moved by Counselor Rick Owens, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perrier. The council has received the request to locate a mobile refreshment vehicle on public land, and, and council directs staff to return to the proponent to suggest other suitable locations.
All in favor? Unanimous? Introduction and reading, and consideration of bylaws?
It's moved by Counselor Dennis Perrier, seconded by Counselor Stacy White. The bylaw nineteen dash one zero zero, being a bylaw to authorize Mayor Clerk to execute all documents related to the sale of seventy and seventy-two Balsam Avenue to Samuel Genier and Alexandra Robbins, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Unanimous?
It's moved by Counselor Dennis Perrier, seconded by Counselor Stacy White. The bylaw nineteen dash one zero one, being a bylaw to authorize Mayor Clerk to execute a negotiated lease agreement with the Kirkland Lake Rotary Club for park space at Two Government Road East, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Unanimous? Uh, no questions from councilor to staff? Whoop, I'm sorry.
There were some questions that came in today, but they had to do all around with the rezoning, so we didn't add them to tonight's conversation. They will be, they were sent to the planner, and she will address them at a later date.
Thank you. Confirmation bylaw?
It's moved by Counselor Dennis Perrier, seconded by Counselor Stacy White. The bylaw nineteen dash one zero two, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held October fifteenth, twenty nineteen, be read a first, second, third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Passed. Uh, notice of motions? None declared? Sorry, uh, counselors' reports?
Uh, I have a couple items I'd like to address. Uh, Festivals Committee announced in a media release, uh, today, or yesterday, that, uh, they will cease operations, uh, at the end of the year. Uh, I did have the opportunity of, uh, speaking with Robin Conley today. Uh, they've, uh, worked the festivals, uh, programs for the last eighteen, nineteen years, uh, done a fabulous job. Uh, there's no ill feeling with council or the town in any, any manners such. Uh, they're just, I think, a little tired. They want to, uh, opt out for a while, and, uh, maybe somebody will else, uh, else, uh, in the service group will pick up, uh, uh, some of the festivities that they, uh, promoted during the, the last eighteen, nineteen years. So I think, uh, on behalf of council and the town of Kirkland Lake, uh, a big thank you to the Festivals Committee for their eighteen-year commitment, and we wish them well, and, uh, they're welcome back at the table anytime. A couple other things, uh, just to remind council that the Hundredth Anniversary Committee will hold their volunteer appreciation night on, on November the eighth, uh, so counselors can put in their, uh, their names for that. Please let Joanne know. Then, uh, direct staff to invite, uh, the committee to council in, uh, November to summarize their activities, uh, for the year, uh, past three years, I should say, and bring the centennial celebrations, uh, to an official, uh, end. Certainly has been a banner year for what they've accomplished, and, uh, we thank them for their efforts, and, uh, the appreciation night, uh, for all the sponsors and, uh, volunteers would, uh, would be a great send-off, that's for sure. Any other, uh, Counselor Ivanoff?
Yeah, I too would like to, uh, uh, thank the Festivals Committee for all the work they did. It was sad news to hear that they were taking, uh, some time off, and that they weren't gonna be doing some events this winter. Uh, Winter Carnival revolves around them organizing and, uh, the events. I think that was, uh, you know, we have the best fireworks in Northern Ontario because of them. Uh, I don't know how we're gonna replace that. We have the best fireworks in the summer because of them. We have the best fish derby in Northern Ontario, all because of them. We have millions of dollars in entertainment and concerts that come to Kirkland Lake because of them. We have millions of dollars that come here in tourism because of them. I think the Festivals Committee, uh, uh, have organized hundreds of volunteers and spent thousands of hours, uh, helping Kirkland Lake become what we are today, and a, a big part of that was because of the, their committee. Um, I think they, they deserve accolades from this council, for previous councils, and for all the number of people that were on their committee for many, many years. I know Robin Conley's been there since the beginning. Uh, there's been a few others. I think Lionel DePree, who's no longer in this community, but, you know, those people that, that organized and set this thing up years and years and years ago. I think Bonnie may have been one of the originals. Um, anyway, uh, my accolades to them, and thank you very much.
Well said, counselor.
It's moved by Counselor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perrier. The council adjourn its regular meeting of October fifteenth, twenty nineteen, to an in-camera meeting pursuant to Section two thirty-nine-two of the Municipal Act to discuss one potential land acquisition, one possible lease of municipal property, and three issues related to identifiable persons.
All in favor?